A moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order September 10, 2025, 10:00 AM. All three commissioners are present, as well as our administrator, Renetta McClure, who will start us off with consent and approval. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay. You have 12 exonerations for 114,849-02. One request to create a new tax statement, $326.93. Minutes for September 3, 2025. Vouchers, General County Fund, 310,187-32. Magistrate Court, 163-63-911, $534. Chestnut Ridge Park, 6,847-92. Camp Muffley, 6,198-34. Mason-Dixon Park, 1,0572-65. Mon County Center, 4,0483. Opioid Settlement Funds, 4,139-20. Assessors' Valuation, $3,032.37. Payroll, $2,088,810-82. ARPA, 229,652-63. Purchasing Card vouchers for General County Fund, 10,168-81. Chestnut Ridge Park, 2,554-03. Mason-Dixon Park, 181-54. Mon County Center, 830-51. Recreation Levy, 6,006-1355. Assessors' Valuation, 788-50. ARPA, 3,008-15, for a voucher total of $2,680,573-82. You have no budget revisions to approve. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website, and fiduciary orders for September 10, 2025.
Move to approve the consent and agenda items as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the estate of Clarence Keith Miller. This was stemming from a claim filed against the estate, a subsequent petition to remove executor from the estate by the claimant. And since then, we've received an objection to the petition filed by the executrix's counsel, David Grunau, and objecting to all the things that were objected to in the first place. So how do we want to treat this commission?
I think now that it's... We've actually received a legal correspondence regarding this matter. I think that it'd be better served for us to go ahead and refer this to a fiduciary commissioner.
I would tend to agree. I think with one stipulation, normally, it's normal course of business for a claimant to, when they've got a claim for a bill, to request a hearing. Then there's a deposit required for that hearing. I think in this circumstance, it's almost as if the burden of proof has flipped.
Right. Yeah, the legal counsel for the administrator, executive...
Executrix, that was...
Executrix is the one that filed the...
Objection.
The objection, asking for a hearing.
Right.
So I think that they can have that hearing in front of a fiduciary commissioner. So but since their side's asking for the hearing, I think that they should have to cover the deposit that's required to...
Conduct the hearing.
To get that going. I don't know what that's called.
Yeah, that's just paying for the hearing, essentially. So I would think we should put a time restraint on that, maybe 30 days to file the...
I think they do. When you refer to a fiduciary commissioner, don't they have so long to pay the deposit?
No, I don't think so. I think you guys have been doing that.
Yeah.
Have been putting stipulation on that, so it doesn't drag out.
Okay.
I would suggest 30 days to pay the fee to the fiduciary commissioner to request to have the formal hearing. Absence of that being done within 30 days of today, we can take action on our own.
So the hearing will be held within 30 days, and also...
No, file the deposit.
File the deposit. The fiduciary commissioner will have it.
Well, why don't we... The only reason why I'm saying 15 days, I know this has been going on and on. And I think they waited until the last second to send that. So I think in 15 days, if they need to put the deposit down. I think that's really fair, considering how long this has been going on. If that's okay.
Well, let me rephrase the motion.
Sure.
I would move that we refer this to a fiduciary commissioner and have estates provide documentation back to both, to all parties.
Right.
I mean, to the party requesting the hearing, indicating that the burden is on them to provide the deposit, and they need to do that within 15 days, or this matter will come back in front of the commission.
I'll second that.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Any other fiduciary orders, Renetta?
No, that's all.
All right. Moving on, introduction of new employees, personnel changes. First, we have MECA 911. Brad, good morning.
Good morning. Montague County Homeland Security Emergency Management, MECA 911, has hired a new employee to fill a vacant telecommunications position. McKenna Campbell will begin her duty September 16, 2025. And as usual, she will need to complete her probationary period. Thank you for consideration in approving our staffing change.
I move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you.
Next, Chestnut Ridge Park. I believe we have our esteemed Parks Director here, Chair Petzko, to introduce our new employee.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce Taylor Holmes. With your permission, we would like to hire her as our recreation manager at $31,200. She would be a full-time employee with benefits. She will help us elevate the experience at the Tubing Hill during the winter, our experience at the pool during the summer, and also the concert series, amongst other things that people experience throughout the county.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. Welcome.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Welcome.
Look forward to seeing what you can do.
Thank you.
Next, day report center.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I would like to introduce Miranda Golden. She's been a part-time employee with us for two years now. And we had the opportunity to combine a couple of part-time positions. And with your approval, we would like to add her as a full-time office coordinator, starting at $32,000, with a probationary period of 90 days.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome to your full-time role.
Welcome, full-time.
Thank you.
What do we brokered, Commissioners, if we're going to ask a question for clarification?
We have a public session.
We're about to do the public.
Yeah, right now it's comments from the public, so you certainly can. We won't be able to respond or in comments from the public. But if you hang around after the meeting, we can certainly talk to you. So queuing right to... This opens our public comment session. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to the commission, please state your name and what you want to talk about. And you've got a minute or two to state your piece. And again, we can't, we don't respond at this point, but we can. And our closing comments are after the meeting.
Understood. David Grunau, on behalf of the estate of Clarence Miller, just was asking for a quick clarification. I didn't fully hear everything that was said. It seemed as though somebody mentioned the burden shifting from moving to the original movement to the estate, which objected and sought a hearing, or at least sought... Well, I would just point out that the first filing by the claimants did, in fact, request a fiduciary hearing on that issue, which is actually what the second filing of this person stemmed from. So I don't know who should be funding this, but we will take care of it, if need be. But he was the first to ask for a fiduciary commissioner and a hearing on that.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. And we'll talk to you after the meeting. Anyone else? Comments from the public? Seeing no one, we will close. Comments from the public? Colleen Kuhn-Grant. Good morning, Colleen.
Good morning. I have a request for reimbursement for the Saki grant in the amount of $22,471.66.
Move to approve the request for reimbursement as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Nothing else for there. Moving on to correspondence. We received correspondence on a worker's adjustment and retraining notification from West Virginia University Research Corporation regarding a mass layoff on October 30, 2025 of 507 employees. Sounds worse than it is. It's a layoff from their current structure, and then they're being hired back under a different entity, doing the same jobs, from what I understand. So we have a copy of that correspondence. Any other correspondence on your end, Renetta?
No.
Sean? Tom?
No.
Seeing none, I have none. No unfinished business on the new business. A consideration of approval of a memorandum of understanding by and between the County Commission and the Town of Star City regarding the process to be utilized in efforts to market and sell property in the vicinity of Boyers Avenue, which was previously acquired with the proceeds of tax increment revenue bonds previously issued by the County Commission.
Okay. I'd like to offer a quick description of what we're doing here, and then make a motion. So Star City is a Class IV municipality, is not eligible under the West Virginia Tax Increment Financing Act. So the county established the TIF district. Proceeds of the 2012 bonds were used to purchase the properties, and the properties were deeded back to Star City. Star City wants to sell the properties, and we've had a recent conversation with them, and we agree. The commission and Star City are going to work on an RFP, a request for developmental proposals. If they receive any proposals, Star City is to review and prepare a summary and then suggest and provide suggested development proposal or proposals to approve. They are going to meet with us at that point, and we must mutually agree on a successful proposal. Provide there is a successful proposal, the commission and the town agree, the town will deed the property over to us. The commission will negotiate and transfer the property to the developer, provide that we can reach an agreement with proceeds going to the TIF fund. If we can't come to an agreement, then the properties will be deeded back to the town. So that's kind of an overall summary of what we're actually doing here. So I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Montague County Commission and the Town of Star City as presented.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a consideration to approve intergovernmental agreements for dog warden services between the County Commission and the municipalities for the period of October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026. This is a standard thing we do every year. We have one dog warden in the county, and we enter into agreements with the other municipalities to handle their dog-related issues as well.
You want to give a description of the multiple agreements and the amounts?
I can. Let's see. Town of Granville...
$5 million.
$5,478.99. And let me also note for the record, they had 10 calls in 2023 to 2024, and the cost per call is $156.50. No, that's not right.
33 calls.
33 calls?
Yep.
Where is that? I'm looking at the phone sheet.
There's your chart on the back of the...
Yeah, I'm looking at a previous year. Sorry. 33 calls. Yes, that's more like it. $166.03 per call. Then we have the city of Morgantown. They had 269 calls, again, for $166.03, which comes out to $44,662.07. Star City had 22 calls for $3,652.66. And Westover had 36 calls for $5,977.08.
So we provide the services through the year, and we base the pricing based off of how many calls they have the previous year.
That's correct.
And that $166.03 amount hasn't really changed.
It has. It has a 3% escalator wrote into the agreement every year.
Okay. So with that 3%, I mean, and that 166 probably doesn't cover the cost of each one of those calls, but it's just a nominal amount to actually, to figure out.
It's still cheaper for them to use our service rather than having their own.
Correct. Rather than create their own services. So I move to approve the intergovernmental agreements with the Town of Granville, City Morgantown, Town of Star City, and the City of Westover to provide animal control services to those municipalities.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of a request by the Town of Blacksville for funding assistance up to $30,000 for various expenses related to the sewage system. Tom, you've been kind of taking the lead on this.
Yes. I'd like to move this request and then just discuss it very quickly. So I move...
And the amount is funding and then not to exceed the amount of $30,000.
Not to extend past $30,000.
Second.
Okay. In the last week, I've been in touch with, again, Joe Statler, and also I've been working with Mike Harmon. Mike Harmon is the Wayne Township Supervisor in Green County, and we had learned that he had been collecting sewage fees and then paying to Blacksville, and there's 29 individuals. We had learned that up till April, they were paying the fees, and for whatever reason, they weren't collected. He is now on the process of collecting those fees. He also understood that there was a rate increase by Blacksville, the Town of Blacksville, and that rate increase does not affect Pennsylvania, because he has to go to Pennsylvania Department and get it all approved. He doesn't feel there's any problem with that. But we now have a communication room between Joe Stat and myself and I, and we're looking forward to moving forward to not only getting the funds needed, also getting the funds from those individuals in Blacksville who aren't, who are behind, and also at the same time, looking to collect the funds to do a study, because we need to know exactly what is the problem before any more money is being sent there.
Great.
Okay.
The funding is being used for immediate bandages?
Fixes, address overdue obligations, and a system putting a plan together for overall rehabilitation of the entire system.
Correct.
I believe that the tanks need pumped is the primary emergency right now on that. So, all right, we have first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, consideration of requisition number 106 for the University of Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisitions for $1,082,852.08.
Yes, you're correct.
Thanks.
I was looking at the total amount. Yes, as the administrator indicated, the balance in the account is $1,089,300. And then you take away the statutory lien of $100,000, and then the admin fee is the $1,082.852 number that she indicated. Because this is the beginning of the year, I neglected to provide updates as far as where this stacks up in comparison to last year, until we got a couple of months into the year. So right now, we are trending about 19.25% over last year.
Great.
Now, there's an anomaly in there, that August collections was up about 300,000, 400,000. So that kind of skews that number. But even if you take that out, it's still at a minimum of about 10% increase over previous year. So it's looking good, and that's basically an increase in about $37 million in sales that's projected for this year, based on this number. So anyhow...
These funds get paid directly from the Treasurer's Office to the trustee, and then the trustee makes bond payments. That's what these money is for.
So I move to approve requisition number 106 for UTC Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount as presented.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Last, to consider for approval, the purchase power agreement between the Montague County Commission and Solar Hauler for construction of a solar photovoltaic generation facility for the Montague County Center in accordance with RFP number 2025 MCC-002.
I move to approve the power purchase agreement as presented, and giving the administrator approval to sign the agreement on behalf of the commission.
Second.
Do you want to discuss it all, or...
Yeah, yeah. We discussed this last week. Was it last week or the week before? In the last two weeks, we came to the commission to update them on the technical evaluation of the two proposals we received. We had an RFP. We received two proposals. One proposal was technically superior to the other, and actually, we didn't even consider the other one for further consideration, because they didn't even meet the minimal acceptable score from a technical standpoint. So Solar Hauler did present two options. One was outright system purchase, and the other one was a purchase power agreement. The purchase power agreement was the route that we decided, or I'm suggesting that we go, because it really, there's no cost to us for the actual system. The system will be solar hollows, and we will pay them a flat fee, which only goes up by 1.9% a year. This is a flat fee per rate. So it's like, we're going to pay them .7 cents per watt that we use, or kilowatt.
Kilowatt.
Yeah, kilowatt that we use. And that amount would only, can only increase by 1.9%, where average electricity rates have been increasing by about 3%. So we'll save on, one, being able to cap our rates, and, two, being able to actually sell back the electricity that's generated to the electric company, get a credit on our invoice. So we expect in the first year, we'll have about $35,000 savings in the first year. The disagreement is, for 25 years, we have an option to extend for 10 years on top of that. But all the equipment and the maintenance of the equipment and all that is all on the vendor. We will just utilize the actual power and pay them a set rate. So that's about it. Rachel, you have anything else to add?
Sure.
I appreciate Rachel bringing us to this as an option. We started talking about this probably almost a year ago. And then as we got into summer, and there was possibly some changes that were going to occur as a result of the big, beautiful bill, we had to move quicker to actually be able to take advantage of those tax incentives. So the purchase option, we would have been taking advantage of tax incentives, but it was a lot more work administratively on our side. So what we'll be doing is putting this agreement in place. The vendor will work out all the financing and work out those tax credits, which they'll get, because it'll be their system. So it's a lot less administrative work on us. But anyhow, Rachel brought this to us as an option. We started talking about it, and then we realized if we're going to do something, we need to get an RFP out and make a decision. And I'm excited about it. I'm geeked out about the savings and figuring all that out as we go along. So anyhow, Rachel.
Sure. Yes, I agree. And thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to enable this project. You know, one of the largest expenses that we have at that center is just overhead utilities. And seeing an opportunity to reduce that cost at the facility is great, especially over the long term. And like you said, we have been working on this project for a while, and it will continue to take some time. So we probably won't see any actual construction until 2027. But like Commissioner Sikora mentioned, Solar Hauler, our chosen vendor, will be working on the financing, procuring that equipment throughout the next year. And then hopefully, we'll see some developments out at the Mon County Center at Mylan Park here soon. So thank you, guys, again.
I'm looking.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for all your work on this, Rachel. So we had a first and a second?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all for that. No reports from elected officials, department heads? Granville have anything to offer today, other than just awesomeness that you always bring? So, okay. Next, reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, very quickly, I was fortunate to attend the ribbon-cutting grand opening with the other commissioners at the Hope Gas Ice Pavilion rink. It is not your traditional ice rink. I think many people in this community are going to think, oh, well, it's a new rink of what Morgantown looks like. It is completely different. It holds 1,000 people, plus, I believe, 250 standing room only. There's plenty of room. The amount of excitement was amazing. And I really want to congratulate Mylan Park and everyone who put it together within 11 months. I know others have been trying for seven, eight years, and we were able to do it in 11 months. So I'm very excited about that. And second is, we please everyone be safe on Saturday. It's the Pitt game, and, you know, people will be watching us, and just make good decisions. That's all.
We're still playing that game?
Yeah. Oh, speaking of that, the kickoff, the hockey rink Friday night is WV versus Pitt. They sold 1,000 tickets already, and it's unbelievable. So it's a pretty exciting weekend, and the WV players were thrilled when they came on the ice the first time, and they were little kids. It was a really great atmosphere. So I'll pass on to you.
Thanks, Tom. Since last Wednesday, last Thursday, we, the administrator and Rachel and I... Sorry, Rachel, you're right behind that beam. Had negotiations with Solar Hollow to kind of get to our agreement. And then I had a Frontier Project tag-up, which I have some really good news to report about that. They're actually done. They've finished their project. So I'm gathering information, and we'll put together a press leave in conjunction with them. So they start the meetings, and basically, we're done, which we were thinking this was going to be through the end of the year. So that's good news. But I'm still gathering some information I'm going to share with them before we make it public, like, all the details. Friday, staff reports, and a local broadband team tag-up last Friday. As Commissioner Bloom indicated, the three of us did participate in the Hope Gas Ice Pavilion grand opening. And I really want to thank Mylan Park on all their work for this, the Hazel Ruby McLean Charitable Trust, who put up $15 million to build this, and local community... I don't know what you want to call them, activists or...
Frank Oliverio.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely deserves...
Frank Oliverio, I mean, he's been talking about this for two, three years.
Weekly.
And we didn't think that, we didn't think that it was possible...
Right.
Because we also have a levy supporting another ice rink. And I think that, you know, at some point, the city and Bow Park and Mylan Park all had to agree. So I appreciate all parties agreeing to just really the concept of this. I know that it changes what the actual, the White Park facility will look like. That'll be more of a community facility for community skates and that type of stuff, while you have this, this facility is more of a competition facility, but still has that community aspect, and they have the capability of moving year-round.
Sure.
So it's really, really exciting. And certainly, thank Mark Nussarode and all the board at Mylan Park for their efforts in pulling this together. March Weston, who, again, as Tom said, made it happen within 15 months. I mean, the fact that this was able to open up. And then lastly, Hope Gas, who signed on as a sponsor, a major sponsor. So really, it's a really nice facility. People get a chance to go up there and see it. Yesterday, the administrator and I had our HR tag-up. Today's a regular day, no work session. We have one interview for the K-9 director position, and then the administrator and I have an interview with an HR generalist. Thursday, tomorrow, is MAP Executive Committee. I have a site visit to the Western End to discuss right-of-way needed for the Comcast broadband project. We have Red Team and Development Authority. Friday, staff reports. We have our DOH tag-up, and then I have Comcast Broadband Projects update. And lastly, obviously, it's kind of things are starting. I noticed yesterday, it seems like there's already more people in town.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, like Kroger's was packed on Monday, like it usually is on a football Saturday. So I look forward to this week, and hopefully, a good result. And be safe. Make good decisions.
All right, a few things. Just in mention to the ice rink, again, it's been touched on, of course, but to go from conception to completion in a little under two years is truly remarkable. It's amazing what money, know-how, and willingness will do. It took a problem that, as we say, Frank Oliverio was in here, along with his tribe of supporters, giving us information about updates at the ice rink. They were going to lose an entire season, which would have effectively killed hockey in Morgantown. I've had... I've had friends play growing up, and their kids play, and they, the stories I hear about them traveling to Wheeling and Pittsburgh just to get ice time, it's been truly amazing. And then, and every time that happens, that's people leaving our community, spending money elsewhere, whereas this will be an attraction that'll bring teams in, it'll be more events, more hotel stays, more, more, what was Susan saying, one more?
Heads and bets.
One day, one dollar.
One day, yeah.
One day, yeah. Forgive me, Susan, for getting that wrong, but you get the gist. So it's a great addition out there, and that park continues to grow and expand, and hopefully we will be getting some traction on getting the road out there at some point here, a little more improved than it is already. Commissioner Bloom and I attended the Liberia Open House last Wednesday as well. It was pretty amazing to see what's going on up there. It's at the old Shriner Building on Georgetown Road.
It's called School Road, actually.
School Road, and it's really amazing. So we hear all the time about the number of kids in foster care in West Virginia, and conceivably, when these kids graduate from childhood, essentially, and are no longer in foster care, what happens to them? A lot of them get lost in the shuffle. This group is geared towards young women who are aging out of foster care, gives them a place to stay, and helps them find either educational training or work training, and it was really remarkable what happened, and again, a relatively short period of time. Again, March Weston went in there and just knocked this thing out. The building looks amazing, and I really appreciate the work they're doing up there. The Mon County Fair is this week, so it's all set up out there at Mylan Park. So please, if you're inclined to go to the fairs, it looks like they've got a good, got the amusement rides out there, and they've got a good thing going on this year, so please support our fair. So other than that, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.